I like peanut M&Ms.
Like I said, had M&Ms.
The M&Ms are good.
The Wednesday, November fifteenth, meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now broadcasting live and recording this meeting. Is anyone else in the audience recording our, recording the meeting? Please state your name and reason why you'd be doing so. Seeing none. I don't think we have anyone joining us remotely. It appears we have everyone here in person. So, welcome, members of the school committee. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence and will observe that for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. And also, I'd like to wish all of our veterans here in the city of Chicopee and all those who served the military and all those who sacrifice a belated Happy Veterans Day. Sarah, could we please take a roll call?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Parrott?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Dr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loops?
Present.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Twelve present.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left with the vice chair, Susan Satella-Lopes.
Could I please ask that as a discussion topic at the first meeting in December, that metal detectors at our high schools be put on the agenda? Please.
Thank you, Ms. Sat.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate the two newest school committee members that are coming on board, Deanna Russo-McCarleth and Sunny Brooks. Welcome.
Thank you. Grace Schofield?
I just wanted to thank everyone who got out and voted and thanks for the support forever. And congratulations to all my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam Shumsky.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone who came out and voted last Tuesday. It really was a beautiful day outside. I also want to congratulate my successor, soon-to-be successor, Sunny Brooks, on his reelection, his election, and congratulate Mayor View and my other colleagues on their successful re-elections. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chat Satella.
Ms. Sat.
Sure, Doug Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the sentiments of some of my colleagues here. I want to take a moment and thank the residents of Ward Eight for voting for me last Tuesday. Your support means everything to me. I also want to congratulate my nephew, Tim, and wish him much success on the, on the city council. I would like to congratulate Sunny Brooks, who's in the audience tonight, and Ms. Deanna McCarleth on being elected to the school committee. And last but not least, to Mayor View, being elected to two more years running the city. And I look forward to working with all of you coming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra Parrott.
Congratulations as well to everyone who won their elections this term. As liaison to the city council, I'm happy to share that on eleven nine, the city council voted unanimously to appropriate 1.25 million dollars for the feasibility study for Annan Berry School at the request of the mayor, for his mayor's order. The funding is from the stabilization fund, as I said, at the mayor's request. And a thank you, too, is extended to my colleagues, Tim Wagner and Sam Shumsky, for giving public input at the meeting, as well as a shout out to our past colleague, now Ward Nine City Councilor, Mary Beth Piniacastello, for reminding the councilors that the discussion about a new Berry School goes back years to the tenure of our past superintendent of public schools, Mr. Richard Reji. So, it was fantastic to see the unanimous support for the education of our students with this new building. Also, praise is extended to our ROTC students for their exemplary professional demeanor during their participation at the Veterans Day program organized by Stephanie Shaw, Director of Veteran Services for Chicopee. And during the weekend services, it was wonderful to meet several veterans, Mr. Plant, Mr. Gomez, Mr. Morales. And it was surprising to learn that Mr. Morales is a World War II veteran who will soon be celebrating 100 years of life. It was an honor to meet these gentlemen and to hear their stories. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues here and say congratulations to those who won election and reelection. Mr. Shumsky, I look forward to serving with you. Continued service on the city council together. I'm sure we'll do some wonderful things in conjunction with Mayor View and his administration. Superintendent Ware, it may have been brief, but it's been, it's been a good time so far. I think you're doing an excellent job thus far. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their, for their friendship and their mentorship throughout my, my two years on this board. And to echo a little bit of what Ms. Parrott said, going back to our Veterans Day celebrations, I'd like to give a, a little bit of a shout out to my grandfather, John Wagner, who was a World War II veteran, as well as recently turned 100 years old and served in the U.S. Navy on the USS Mervine in several important missions and battles throughout the war. So, Grandpa John, thank you for your service, your city, your state, and your country. We all love and appreciate you. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jason Douth?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of the board up here. Congratulations to my fellow school committee members, old and new and incoming. Wanted to thank my friends, family, and then, most importantly, the constituents of Ward Three for their support. And just wanted to wish a happy early Thanksgiving to all of our staff, students, and families out there. I hope they're able to spend some quality time with family and enjoy some well-deserved rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all of the constituents in Ward Nine for turning out to vote. I appreciate your support again. And I want to echo all from all of my other fellow colleagues what they said about everyone else in this room. I don't want, need to repeat it, but I just want to echo it. Their congrats to all. Thank you.
Thank you. And David Barcello?
Yes, I also like to thank the voters in Ward Two for returning me to office. I'm always humbled, even though I was unopposed, to get such a large number of votes. And I always extend an invitation, always, to anyone who has a problem, anything with the schools, any issue, please, I'm always open to your phone calls, emails, and I will, I will get back to you within a very short period of time. Thank you very much for returning me to office. Ms. Sat, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to, to also thank the residents of the city of Chicopee for entrusting in me to serve as mayor for another two years. I'm looking forward to working with the current school committee members. Congratulations. I know that actually all of you ran unopposed. And also to the new members of the school committee as chair, I look forward to working with you as well. And for those who didn't vote for me, I'm hoping to earn their trust over the next two years. So, city of Chicopee is a great place and I'm really proud to serve. And I think there's a lot of potential and I have passion and hope to spread that passion and pride over the next two years in working with all of you. So, thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Those in the audience, those are at home. I just want to say it's been a busy few weeks leading the schools. And so, I just want to give you an update on some of my travels. To date, I definitely have been in all the schools, but more specifically, I have toured all of the secondary schools, so those are the middle schools and the high schools. We had formal walkthroughs. I want to thank my team, Ms. Jen Belleville and Ms. Carol Cruiser, for participating with me and others, Dr. Stolar, as we've toured the schools. So, today was Dupont, yesterday was Bellamy, and before that were both high schools and Chicopee Academy. So, we are looking forward to getting around to the schools, seeing what's going on in their classrooms, so I can report back with confidence that we are doing and delivering our best for our young ones in the classrooms. Moving on, we've had some great events. I know National Honor Society was at comp last week. I was absent due to the fact I was at the Cape with Mr. Lamath and Ms. Schofield. However, Ms. Jen Belleville, I just want to thank her for stepping in. And I know Ms. Satella-Lopes was there present to represent for the school committee. I just want to always acknowledge what our students are achieving high and above honors. And so, I just want to give a shout out to those students at Chicopee Comp, as well as I was at comp today for the Gear Up celebration, in which students were getting accepted to colleges right on the spot. It's pretty exciting to see. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Lamath, principal at Chicopee Comp, for inviting me and reminding me that the event was going on. It's just a nice token reminder that we're doing all this for their futures and they were taking the best foot forward today as they were getting accepted to colleges. Last but not least, I echo a lot of the sentiments up here about we're about to move into one of our major breaks, the holiday breaks next week. So, I just want to remind families, be safe during this holiday break and connected to the recent situation we had in front of our school last week when it comes to speeding in our communities. So, I'd just like to remind our community that we do take this seriously. We should slow down and that we always want to keep safety in my, in, on the minds of our students and the people who work for our students. So, I just want to send positive thoughts and warm regards to the family of that student who is still recovering and their families in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. We don't have anyone who signed up for public input, so, and we don't have any visitors scheduled, so we'll, we'll move right on to approval of minutes, twenty-three dash eleven dash five.
Move that the minutes of the regular school, regular meeting of the school committee held on November first, 2023 be approved.
Vice Chair, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Reports twenty-three dash eleven dash six.
Report on personnel action taken. I'd like to invite Ms. Dubb Green up to the podium to give a report.
Good evening, everyone. For the period October twenty-six through November eighth, which your personnel report covers, we had a total of 11 new hires, four of those teachers, one of those paraprofessionals. During that period, we also had four resignations. We are still continuing to have our orientation once a week. Today, we had 12 people at our orientation. Postings on school spring, as of this afternoon, there are 73. Twenty-eight of those are teacher postings. Eighteen of those are paraprofessional postings. And if both of those put together, 20 of those positions are in the special ed population. And then, of those 73, 13 of those are for new positions. So, we're still building up. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Lamath?
Yes, we voted to increase the salaries. And I've been asked by a few people that basically said, "You increase the salaries, but where would the people looking for a job know that it's been increased?" Is there any way we can advertise our top salaries now so that people would start to see it from other school districts?
Yes, if I may. We actually did talk about that in the executive team on Monday. And so, we were waiting to wrap up negotiations with all the bargaining units before we actually put it out there just to be fair and representative of all units. But yes, I agree with you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sandra Parrott?
Just for the viewing public, we have several conferences coming up. We have three people going to multi-day conferences. Mr. Ingram, our director of CTE, is going to the National Conference for the Association of Career Technical Education in Arizona. Ms. Belleville and Ms. Cruiser are going to a conference on compensatory education in Chatham, Massachusetts. And then, we have several people, I believe there's 12 that I counted, going to single-day conferences in the Boston area. And these are our speech and language pathologists going to the American Speech Language Hearing Association Conference. So, it sounds exciting, a lot of professional education going on.
Thank you. Any other discussion? New business, twenty-three dash eleven dash seven.
Move that the bills warrant S-111-023 totaling $792,090.1 be approved.
Motion to approve. You have a motion to approve. Any discussion? I'll have Sam Shumsky, please read the warrants into the official record.
So, we have one warrant this week. I will read the total of it. For athletics, we have $10,438. Food services, $176,809. For general expenses, we have $124,435. For grants, we have $224,130. For maintenance, we have $127,544. Special education, $123,909. Soon activities, $4,822. For a total of $792,090.
Any further discussion? It's a financial order. We'll take a roll call, please, Sarah.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Your Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Abstain.
Mr. Shumsky?
Abstain.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Ten yes, two abstained.
Motion carries.
Twenty-three dash eleven dash eight. Move that the settlement agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Nurse Unit be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Grace Schofield, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Tim Wagner?
Yeah, so these are just, were contracts that we were supposed to be approving a few months back. We did some negotiations with the UFCW. We came to a settlement and these are some, some slightly different contracts than originally proposed, but that everybody here is, I think, pretty satisfied with.
Any further discussion? Sarah will take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash nine.
Move that the settlement agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Food Service Unit be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Sam Shumsky, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash ten.
Move that the settlement agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Custodial Unit be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Chat Satella, can I get a motion?
Motion to sign.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and sign. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash eleven.
Move that the settlement agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and United Food and Commercial Workers Union Nurse Technicians Unit be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Doug Gerard?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash twelve.
Move that all non-union personnel in cycles one, two, and three, except game personnel, and all full-time personnel on individual contracts, except building principals and the superintendent of schools, receive an additional 2% salary increase for fiscal year 2024, effective July first, 2023, and a 2% salary increase in fiscal year 2025, effective July first, 2024.
Sandra Parrott?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash thirteen.
Move that all building principals receive an additional 2% salary increase in fiscal year 2024, effective July first, 2023, and a 2% salary increase in fiscal year 2025, effective July first, 2024.
Tim Wagner?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath is out of chair. Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one out of chair.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen.
Move that the school committee request from the city council, the allocation of $7,582,090 from the stabilization fund for educational purposes to balance the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget and to fund the recently approved salary increases.
Vice Chair Susan Satella-Lopes?
I make a motion to postpone this motion per the recommendation of Dr. Ware.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three dash eleven dash fifteen.
Move that the request from career and technical education for 12 students to attend the Skills USA Fall State Leadership Conference in Marlboro, Massachusetts, on November nineteenth and twentieth, 2023, be approved.
Jason Douth?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Dr. Ware?
I would like to invite Mr. Carl Ingram up to the podium to speak a little bit about the, about the trip due to the last-minute nature.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having me tonight. So, real quick, Fall Leadership Conference, as you guys know, our Skills USA program at Chicopee Comp has been around for about 15, almost 20 years now. Skills USA provides the kids with some durable skills. And I use the term durable skills nowadays because that used to be what we call soft skills. But we refer to it now as durable skills. And again, we talk about teamwork, community responsibility. We talk about leadership. Those are some of the, AKA, soft skills that we now call durable skills. So, this particular conference, this Fall Leadership Conference, provides our students with the opportunity to go out to Marlboro, where they participate in some community team-leading events, where they work together with other schools to work on community service-type projects out there in the mid, middle part of the state. Usually, it's dedicated, and again, we only have 12 that went this year because there is a cost behind it, but not that that limits it, but just more of the fact since our last, I think you guys remember me speaking earlier in July about our young man, Mr. Carter Janik, who got national award winner. It's created a lot more buzz in our Skills USA program over at Chicopee Comp. So, we have quite a few students very interested in attending these kind of leadership-type conferences. We do have a district-level competition that we usually participate in sometime in February or March. And then, there's a state-level competition, and then, there's the national-level competition. So, not to get into the weeds too much, but I'm obviously more than willing to answer any question that anybody may have.
I had Sandra Parrott first.
No, not a question, but just a statement that it's, it's wonderful No, not a, a question, but just a statement that it's, it's wonderful that the students are able to participate in this and they, they always do so well, and just participating is a, uh, is a big bonus for them.
So, uh... Absolutely. And I, I know Mrs. Hor probably shared with you guys the agenda. If you take a look at the agenda, it's pretty packed. I mean, the kids are, they're busy from the time they leave Sunday morning to the time they come back, uh, Tuesday morning. So it's very busy. They do keep them active, they do keep them engaged, and again, uh, the smiles on their face, and I used to be, uh, involved a little bit more when I was a teacher, but the driving the van home, you would see the kids kind of dozing off in the van because you literally have, they're, they're very active during that time, to say the least, so. But thank you. We are excited about it.
Vice Chair Susan Zatella.
Could you please tell us the name of the two very committed and hard-working staff members, teachers that are accompanying our students?
Uh, thank you for bringing it up. You're absolutely right. Our two class advisors are Mr. Todd Demers and Mr. James Wozniak, so they deserve much of the credit, uh, for our organization over the last few years. Um, I mentioned it with Ms., Mr. Williams, who was one of our automotive teachers, uh, who just retired this past summer. He was actually the guy that started the program about 20 years ago, but Mr. Demers and Mr. Wozniak have the two that have been, I think they've been doing it now for almost five years, so, but you're absolutely correct, Mrs. Lopez, they deserve a lot of the credit. Yes. Thank you for recognizing that.
Sam Shumsky.
Yeah, I just want to wish our students good luck at this conference.
Thank you. I usually, Friday before they, before we leave and break up, I usually say good luck. Sometimes I'll get them before they get on the van, sometimes I don't, but yes, I will transfer that message. Thank you.
Tim Wagner.
Uh, yeah, just, again, a shout out to, uh, Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Demers, who of course were, were my two teachers and, uh, taught me everything, well, not everything, most of what I know at this point, and, uh, helped me, helped me get the job I, I currently have today at Big Y. Um, they, they really do a great job, and so do all of our other career and technical ed teachers, many, many of whom are sitting out in the audience with us today. Uh, so a shout out to them, and, and you've really got to focus on the, the C there, the career, uh, and technical education there. Um, they don't just teach you a trade in these shops, they, they teach you how to be successful, uh, in your entire professional life. Uh, and what they teach and what they learn at the, this conference and at the, uh, the regional competitions is, is just invaluable information. So thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you. I will transfer that message to them. We appreciate it. They do work very hard, and I say it all the time, I'm super excited to come to work every day, and to me, that's all I can ask for at this stage of my career, so thank you.
Thank you, Doug Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, each and every day, uh, being involved in the, in the trades and the career tech, uh, it's all about gaining, uh, valuable experience, so there's no better way, uh, in my opinion, to be out in the field, uh, and seeing what is actually happening, uh, you know, each and, uh, day in and day out. Uh, so this is a wonderful opportunity for our students to partake in, in, uh, an event